And in the first, the dog actually doesn't want to be in here for this meeting. I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign. All right. All right, I think we're live now. Good. And we are. Perfect. Okay. Good. We'll call to order this special meeting of the Eastern Board of Education at 6:04 PM on Monday, July 12th, 2021. We'll start with reports. First, from Superintendent Dr. Rydell Harrison, then from Dr. Stephanie Pearson Uval. And if there are any board committee reports, we'll hear those as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. Couple of things that I wanted to touch base on and board members, I sent all of the items that I'm sharing tonight. My report and also Dr. Pearson Uval's report to you earlier this afternoon. There's one correction and I'll make that correction when we get to the section on enrollment. So just wanted to share that the CDC has updated its guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K-12 schools. They updated that last week. And so here are a couple of takeaways from that guidance. One thing that they shared was that masks should be worn indoors by all individuals age two and older who are not fully vaccinated. The CDC recommends that schools maintain at least three feet of distance between students within classrooms. Classrooms combined with indoor mask wearing by people who are not fully vaccinated in order to reduce transmission. And then the last is that the guidance from the CDC emphasizes implementing layered prevention strategies. Following the update that came out from the CDC, superintendents received a message from the state informing us that DPH and the State Department of Education are reviewing the guidance and will be assessing Connecticut's current and future guidance for schools in light of the CDC recommendations. And I included in your, in the report, an excerpt from the DPH and CSDE's joint response that on initial review, they strongly endorse and support the guidance. The guidance's emphasis on the importance of in-person learning and on vaccinating the maximum number of students and staff who are eligible. They also took note of the emphasis on layers of in-school mitigation strategies and said that we will consider these and other recommendations as we work towards the release of Connecticut's specific guidance for schools in the coming days. Based on their references here and then also kind of the connection to a community, community transmission at the local level, I expect that their guidance is going to highlight the importance of having a collaboration with local health officials. That was really impactful for us this year, and I expect that to continue. So that whatever the recommendations are, that they are shared in light of what the specific sort of health data looks like in our, in our town or in our area. And so, so more to come on that. Just as far as enrollment, I shared that we've seen an uptick in seventeen new kindergarten enrollments Samuel Staples and then twenty-two additional enrollments across grades one through five. And then at the middle school level, we saw ten new enrollments. This is sort of balanced out between the grades one through five. And while we saw twenty-two new enrollees, we also had eleven withdrawals for a number of reasons. And, and why these numbers are specific, especially, or important, especially here during the summer is it gives us a picture of, are we creeping to that level where we should be considering or concerned about adding another class or another teacher in order to maintain our desirable class size? And in talking with Ms. Fox Santura, and then also in talking with Ms. Moore, who is really watching, keeping her eye on, on these numbers as we're waiting for Dr. Clapp to begin as principal. Both of them said that they don't anticipate there being any impact to staffing that we need to be aware of at this time. And of course, we'll continue to watch these numbers, both at the, the school level and then also at the district level as well. But just one clarification. First grade, I showed that in June, there were ninety students. And then I had an increase of two students and a decrease of, I think, eight students I have. It's actually flipped backwards. It's really a decrease of three students at the first grade level and an increase of eight students, bringing that total number anticipated in first grade to ninety-five. And then finally, one of the things that I just wanted to share is that we have no update regarding the planned repairs at this time for Keller. This is something that, that we're working to, as kind of a priority area as we're looking at interim director of finance and operations to pick up where we sort of left off at the end of the fiscal year, making sure that we have all of those agreements in place going forward to make sure that work is done prior to the start of the school year. And so there's no action that the board needs to take on any of these areas at this time. But I'll continue just to provide updates regarding all of these, but particularly on the, the repairs at Keller in that plan.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Any questions for Dr. Harrison?
John, I have comments or discussion. I don't know how that sort of works as far as.
If you have, yeah, questions or comments, I think are all fair game for any of the items that, that we touched on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm really disappointed. I think that the CDC guidance is really disappointing at this time, especially given the health, the local health data and the state health data. And I just hope that as a district, we take recommendations, but we continue to make decisions that we think are in the best interest of kids in our school district. To the extent that that is possible and have us still, you know, remain accredited and whole as far as the, the state is concerned. I've already sent my own communication to legislators regarding this issue for the fall regarding masking and spacing and a return to as normal and typical a school year as possible, particularly in the younger grades for our preschoolers, our kindergarteners, our youngest kids who are coming into school thinking that school is, you know, rows facing forward, two feet apart, not sharing materials. Everybody's face is covered. What does my teacher look like? Continue to be very concerned about that. And I just want to encourage other parents to do the same. I don't know that we would have consensus enough to send a, I would love for us to send a collective statement as a board on some of these issues as we've done when, when things have arisen in the past. But I'm not sure that we would get to the point where we were on board with the exact same statements. So I'm just sort of speaking out to community members. And I just want to say, you know, write to your legislators, write to us, write to the district, write to the health department and express how you want school to look this next year for your child. And, you know, there may be a very mixed bag of opinions. I would expect that. But I think that is probably at this point, you know, the only real impact that we can make on steering that, you know, one way or the other in light of, you know, the guidance as it comes out. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any, any other questions or comments for Dr. Harrison? Okay. Dr. Pearson, you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to provide an update regarding summer curriculum work. Our focus this summer is on math. As you know, the elementary students in K-5 will be using a new resource next year. That resource is called InVision. So our math specialist in Easton and her counterpart in Reading are working together at adjusting the curriculum pacing guides to align with new materials. Now, the, the content, the core content is still aligned to the same standards. The core content for each grade is, is still the same, but they need to remap the year so that it fits in with the units of study that exist in the new resource. So they are working furiously on that as well as the work that will lead to the public-facing documents that will replace what used to be available on our websites in the Atlas online curriculum mapping software. So that's the elementary focus. At the middle school levels, we've discussed in the Board of Education Curriculum Committee, they'll be using a number of different resources. And again, they're not changing the focus on content or standards, but this is simply an adjustment of their units of study to include different resources so that the teachers have more flexibility to meet the needs of individual students. So again, the goal here is differentiation. How can our middle school teachers have the best resources at their disposal so they can meet the students where they are and, and move them forward? So that will be a real focus in middle school. For the work will occur this summer and then certainly for implementation next year. And for the middle school work, that work will be presented at a joint curriculum committee meeting. My hunch is late September. I mentioned earlier, the transition from the Atlas curriculum mapping software to our own internal Google folder-based system. And while that work was planned almost two years ago, in part by the ER-9 K-12 Curriculum Steering Committee with, with input from members of the Joint Board Curriculum Committees, that work was stalled, of course, because of the pandemic. So getting that going again. And now with a new Director of Technology and Digital Learning with us, we hope that we're really going to be able to advance that work. The actual people hours that are required to do this work is considerable. So I just want to be honest and realistic that while I had said at an earlier meeting that my plan was to be able to launch this publicly at the start of school, we don't have the same number of teachers this summer who are, who are just available in lots of different ways to participate in curriculum work. They, many of them really feel that they need a break over the summer. And so some of this work will be completed when teachers return in September. Now, they will have done enough so they can certainly launch the first units of study. But some, some teachers will work after school hours in September. And some of our specialists will work during the day when they return in September. Again, with the same goal in mind, but what, what, what would typically occur over weeks during the summer in this summer is going to be a little bit different. Again, with the same goal. So these are not curriculum changes that are anything different than what the board has already approved. But certainly we want to be able to share with the boards and also with the curriculum committees and the parents so that the implementation of these new resources next year is as sort of user-friendly and, and also for the non educator, free of, free of jargon, so that parents can really help their children at home as the year starts. Questions about curriculum work? Jeff?
If this isn't exactly about the curriculum work, Stephanie, but can you give us a little snapshot of how the summer academy is going?
From what I hear, it's going very well. You know, they just started last week and unfortunately, we had a little issue with the weather on Friday. But the first, the first few days went very well. The Easton Public Library is offering one program a week. And the students who were engaged in, in the first days last week were happily participating. I was in pretty regular contact with our summer academy advisors just to work out details of dismissal and, and record keeping and such, but from what I hear, very positive reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Two questions, Stephanie. I thought I, I'm not sure what I heard you say, but I just want you to repeat. The timing for implementing our new math curriculum is when?
Next year, when the students return in the fall. Next academic year, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, beginning when the students first return.
Okay. And then as far as the online or curriculum work this summer, not going to do as much as we thought for a variety of reasons. I get that. You mentioned one thing that gave me pause, which is having our specialists do curriculum work during the school day. Can you elaborate on that or clarify?
Right. So typically in the first weeks of school, our specialists are working with the teachers to get to know new classes. They begin pulling small groups of students. They begin to conduct assessments as needed, sometimes with new students and sometimes just to sort of recalibrate after the summer. Last year was a little bit different because we didn't do any assessments in the, in the month of September. But if the specialists are unable to complete any work over the summer, that is work that still needs to get done. So while there might be funding for them to do the work after school hours, there are simply a limited number of hours after work that, that this can occur. So they may need to do some of this work during the day, which means that if, if classroom teachers are involved, they would need to be subbed out. And if specialists are involved, then they would not be participating in the typical activities that they, that they complete. I don't anticipate a great need to do that, but I'm just being fully transparent with that possibility. Because I've provided a hard deadline for the end of September for the public-facing documents to be ready. Because in my mind, there is some real urgency to get our curriculum available once again to parents and community members. And it's, it's just atypical that we would go through a whole year without that information being available. So that's where we are.
Okay.
Stephanie, does it make sense to, obviously, our staff and our people are our greatest resource. They're the closest to the material and to the kids. Does it make sense for us to allocate funding for someone to come in on a temporary basis to assist with not only the, the transition to the online programming, you know, just sort of the, you know, the computer-based, that any work that really is more sort of, I want to say drudgery, but you know, something that doesn't require the expertise of our teachers that would take, absorb some of that time. Certainly, we have, I don't know, I mean, Doc, Dr. Harrison, you can, you, both of you can speak more to what's available as far as state grants, but this sounds to me like a possibility for a consultant or retired teacher or somebody to come in for thirty to sixty days and, and help us out with this.
So let me just clarify. So that the transition work that I'm describing, some of it is, is clerical, as you said, Jenny. And, and yes, then we could use support staff in different roles too. If it's a matter of copying and pasting into a document. It takes a certified teacher to be able to distinguish a, a concept from a skill or the name of a unit from the concept within that unit. So there has to be some guidance by a certified staff member. And then when we reach the point where it really is purely clerical, then support staff either that we currently have or potentially using interns or others that we could bring in with grant funding are, that's a definite possibility if, if we reach that need. In terms of the transition to an online programming, what I'm really describing is the transition between the curriculum and documentation. So their pacing work will be ready to go in September. But what won't yet be ready are those documents that are intended for, for the public to view. So the teachers will have everything that they need to teach. But we want the parents and the community to also see in very plain language the, the, the concepts and the skills that are taught in every unit. And that's the work that, that requires some leadership to at least map it out. And then, and then it could be clerical after that. And it's just hard to anticipate exactly how long that will take. And I will say, at the elementary level in math in particular, it's, it's well underway because I get almost a daily update from those who are involved in the work with updated Google Docs. But I can't speak to, you know, both, both integrated language arts and math for both levels.
I thank you for all that clarification. I am definitely talking about bringing someone in who has educational background, experience, certification, et cetera, that can really do some meaningful work for us on a short-term basis. So I guess all I'm saying is, Dr. Harrison, you know, Dr. Pearson, you all, please don't be shy about asking for that support if you think it would help sort of move the process along and, and unburden some of our faculty and let them really focus on kids, you know, when it comes to September and October.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no other questions, I also then just want to provide an update regarding the middle school student DEI survey. So the window closed when parents could provide active consent for their student to take the DEI student survey. And so today, links were sent just to those students whose parents provided active consent. The survey will be open for a week. And then once it's closed, the results will be reviewed and discussed first internally with our climate committee and central office. And then a summary will be put together for the DEI task force.
Any questions for Stephanie?
Stephanie and Dr. Harrison, what are we going to do about concerns regarding individuals taking the survey more than once, security data? I mean, there's been so much. I mean, it's tip it right, misunderstanding, misinformation. I don't know how much of it is accurate or not. I'm certainly not a statistician or, you know, a survey expert. But I would just hate to have all of this good work and forward momentum and, you know, sort of finally arriving at, you know, board consensus and support for this be derailed by skepticism about the actual results once we do get them.
Thanks, Jenny. So for the student survey, remember, the only people who will see, receive a link are those students whose parents actively consented through Power School to having their child take the survey. I have worked actively with the vendor as well as with our legal counsel regarding the ability to create a individual code for students to take the survey while still maintaining anonymity. And that's simply not possible. We would need to collect email addresses. And so if we chose to go that route, then that would be another set of approvals because that's not what parents were told. That's not what the board approved. And frankly, there are, there are some questions about that. Then we are connecting an identity to, to the respondent data. And that's problematic. So it is not impossible for people to attempt to invalidate the information. All information will be reviewed and frankly, all information from the parent survey is helpful in one form or another. Right? So we will read all of it. I, I do think with the student survey, there's less of a likelihood that there will be an intentional sharing or skew of the data. And we'll move forward, right? So we will learn lessons, I'm sure, through this experience. And, and moving forward, we'll look carefully at the way that we gather information in order to support our students and support our staff.
Dr. Pearson, Stephanie, thank, I'm calling you Dr. Pearson Uval tonight. Thank you. I think when it comes time to share this information with the public, we are going to need a better answer than that about multiple, the potential for multiple responses. The way you described it again, like with the consent and the, the parent-student, that absolutely makes sense. But as far as teachers, you know, faculty or probably parents, the parent community being the one that seems to be the most in question. I think we need to really be prepared with a very rigorous response to, you know, any concerns once we really do get to sort of putting it out there.
I understand. We will, we will certainly report the information as it stands, right? So we're, we're not going to pull back on anything that currently exists. And the parent survey results are the, are the parent survey results. But I appreciate your, the sensitivity to the topic and the importance of the actions that we take based on the results. And again, this is one data point. There are so many different ways that we gather information in order to support students, staff and families so that everyone feels safe and included. And this is just one of them.
Thanks, John.
Okay. So I want to give an opportunity to anyone who's been working on any of their committees to, to give an update. I don't know that we have anything too active except for perhaps policy and DEI. Devin, is there anything you wanted to update or Jenny on DEI?
We haven't met. The most recent meeting was canceled.
Right. Okay. On, on policy, I can be brief. So we, we've continued to meet each Friday. We, we actually wrapped up our work and in terms of the recommendations for sort of inter-board sort of workings and our recommendations for some standards that we can establish to, to make sure that when we do work together with our, with our sort of sister boards that, that we can do so as effectively and efficiently as possible. We, I, I think there is a general interest in, in doing a sort of a larger, what would be called a board retreat, which would be a regular meeting where we're going to devote sort of more time, you know, to, to really digging in on these sort of questions of board function and, and, you know, sort of working, working on ourselves so that we can all be sort of better at this work. Probably late summer or early fall. And, you know, you'll hear more from the policy committee on, on some recommendations related to, to that work. And certainly, I think the boards are sort of independently interested in that, in that kind of work as well. I know Jenny, you've, you've expressed that, an interest in that as well. So that, that'd be it for me in terms of policy committee update.
Quick question for you. You and I chatted about this a while ago. And I've had conversations with other board members at Reading and Region I. The idea that using our sort of designated outside council that we have today to do some of this, to, for a variety of reasons that I mentioned to you. But has that had any conversation at the joint policy meeting?
We, we've talked, yeah, I mean, to many, many months ago, we, we talked about it and it was sort of deemed to be cost prohibitive because of the sort of the many hours of work. And it's, it's also, I would say, we are on a pretty good path. And it's been about two and a half months that we've just been focused on this sort of establishing and documenting the, the sort of inner, you know, sort of the interactions and sort of when we meet with our, our sister boards and sort of what that looks like. But that, that work that we were doing before, we were going through in roughly three meetings, sort of, sort of three Friday meetings. We, we keep it to an hour and it's, you know, first thing in the morning, we meet, we do an hour. And then we, you know, put down, put down the pen and get together again. So it's pretty, pretty manageable. But, you know, I think the idea is that now that we're done with the, the questions about how the boards work together and, you know, until we're able to present that to the boards and get feedback that we picked back up. We were on the four thousand series and the idea is that we could, we could get through the, you know, so the rest of the four thousand, move on to the five, six. I think it's the seven thousand that doesn't exist, or it may be the eight thousand. For some reason, there's a gap there. But get all the way to the nines in the next two months. So, you know, that, that would be our intent. But, you know, certainly open if, if people feel like it, it would be useful to, to get a quote from, from the council. And we could, we could look into that.
I think it would be helpful to get a quote. If maybe somebody's already done it, it'd sound like you guys, somebody had already done it if they knew it was cost prohibitive. Only for a couple of different reasons, but it's just, it's a huge time sink for you guys. And, and these are not lifetime appointments, right?
Right.
We're all going to find something different to do with our evenings at some point. And the continuity with an outside council vis a vis the members, you lose it when that, that intelligence, anyway, so.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think there's a definite benefit there. And if it's not, if it's, if we can figure out a way to do that in an affordable way, like, I'm, I'm definitely pro that. The one thing to note, we, we're not creating any policy out of whole cloth. We're basically using the CAPE policy and just going through and, you know, CAPE, you know, they do a good job for what they're doing, but there's oftentimes a sort of mixing of policy, regulations and sort of aspirational language. And the main, main work that we're doing is really saying like, get rid of the aspirational language. Like that, that's not, we're not looking for a mission statement from you. And get rid of the, the regulation, which is the, the specific ways in which our sort of administrators execute policy. That's, that's not what the policy is meant for. It's just give me the, what is, what, what are we required to do by, you know, by law? So, you know, that, that is helpful, but I agree, it would be really nice if, if we could just pay to have that done. Okay. Good. All right. So all, all. So I'll, I'll dig into that more and see if we can get an answer back before the next time we meet. Thanks, Randy. So that takes us to our discussion and possible action. And our first item there is the appointment of a new board member to fill a vacancy. We have received a recommendation from Democratic Town Committee nominating Jennifer DeJesus to fill the role of Gretchen Goldstein that was previously vacated. And I wanted to give Jennifer an opportunity, I'll just give you that there, an opportunity to say a few words, talk about her, her background and, and maybe tell us a little bit about why she, she's interested in joining the Board of Ed.
Thanks, John, and thanks the rest of the Board of Ed and, and our administrators for allowing me this opportunity and to step in and, and help fill Gretchen's role. I've been in Easton for going on four years. I have a six-year-old daughter entering first grade this coming school year. So, you know, I want, I wanted to find a way to give back to our community. I absolutely love Easton. I think it's a beautiful community. You know, one of the top reasons we moved here was for the schools. And I, I feel that, you know, I'm willing and able to help give wherever it's needed. My education and professional background, I, my undergrad degree is in accounting. Upon graduating, I, I worked for a regional accounting firm for about six years doing auditing and taxes and earned my CPA license. Realizing that I did not want to be a partner in a CPA firm, I went back to graduate school, earned my MBA where I then moved into a corporate accounting role with IBM back in New York. So I was with IBM for about 15 years and a number of finance, planning and accounting roles. So I know a lot of the work that the Board of Ed does involves working closely and collaborating with the Board of Finance at, at the budget season time. I hope that my, you know, 20 years of experience can maybe add some value to those discussions. I understand that, I understand the importance of budgeting, limited resources and allocating funds to the top priorities. I, I did that for many years at IBM managing multimillion dollar budgets. So I hope that my expertise can find some value among this committee and, you know, just willing and able to learn as much as possible. I'm, I'm new to the scene of education, having just one little one in the school district. So I do have a lot to learn from all of you and I, I look forward to hopefully working with you in years to come. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Any, any questions?
Welcome aboard, Jen.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you very much.
I'll, I think the chair will entertain a motion, move that the Eastern Board of Education accept the recommendation of Democratic Town Committee and appoint Jennifer DeJesus to fill the board seat previously vacated by Gretchen Goldstein. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
And thank you, Devin. Any further discussion? Very good. I'll call the vote. I'll do a roll call for this. Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff. Randy?
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny?
Yes.
Thank you, Devin?
Yeah.
Thank you. I vote yes. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. So I think next steps will be Jennifer will connect with our town clerk and be sworn in and then have all the privileges and obligations of, of board Eastern Board of Education member. Thank you so much, Jen. We're really looking forward to working with you.
Thanks for joining us, Jen.
Thank you for having me.
All right. That takes us to our next item, which is the vote for secretary. So we, we have two members of the board who have expressed an interest, Jeff and Devin. And I thought we would start by just giving Jeff and Devin an opportunity to sort of express their, sort of why they're interested in filling the role and just, you know, sort of briefly talk about, you know, what, what they, what they, they, they think sort of favors their candidacy. And we could, we could paper, rocks, scissors for who goes first.
No, go ahead, Jeff. You can go first.
Well, I've, I, I certainly understand the position and what it takes to do it, having been, having been the chair for so many years. And I, I think it would give me, give me another opportunity to see the board at a little different angle. And so I was interested to, to put my hand in the air, understanding that we had an opening.
Thanks, Jeff. Devin?
Yeah, so I think similar to Jeff, just have really enjoyed, I have less experience. Obviously, I've been on the board for about a year, but I have about two decades working in education and just wanted an opportunity to be, you know, be more involved and have really enjoyed getting to know this work and, you know, have very vested interest with two kids in our schools and a third one coming in in about a year. And just want to really make sure to be involved and supportive of our schools as best as I can.
Great. Thank you. So we do this in a few ways. We could, we could try a few motions. We could, I, I have a idea about a sort of general purpose motion. I don't know if it flies, but something like, no one has to make this motion, but move that the Eastern Board of Education hear from interested candidates for the role of Board Secretary and elect the member who receives the majority of votes from the board to fill that position. We could also just try a vote here and then make the motion to, to vote. So any, anybody have thoughts?
Yeah, whatever's expedient.
Yeah, I think that's the right answer, Jenny. I think that's exactly right. I, so we do have to actually do this vote in writing, which is an interesting artifact of sort of some of the old bylaws. So I think we're going to need to, to actually write it down and hold it up to the screen. So we could, we could do that. And then we can sort of elect whoever receives the most votes. Does that sound reasonable to folks?
No. What we'll do it that way, anyway.
Yeah, good. Okay. Wonderful. All right. Very good. So if folks want to just write down.
What are you going to do, like hold it up to the camera or?
Yeah, because we have to write it down. And so we're going to have a, we're going to have a record of the written down that people can inspect and that's going to satisfy, so it's going to satisfy our bylaws.
Do like second grade, like put heads down and put your hands up.
Yeah, right. Yeah. And it's, I don't think it's meant to be a secret ballot. I think we, we're going to vote out loud, but I think that's, I think it's okay. And I frankly, don't think we can go wrong here. I think we have two wonderful candidates. Okay. So I'll go first, just because it's my, my awkward process. So I, I would, I would favor Devin in the role.
I'll second your Devon with Jeff Parker.
Okay.
You can, I'll go next. Oh, you can't see me. Let me angle it just right. I have Jeff.
Okay. And Debbie, sorry, this is for board members? That's all right. Go ahead, Jeff?
Well, if I don't vote for myself, there must be something really wrong.
Really wrong. Thank you, Jeff. Good. And Devin?
I vote for myself, too.
Very good. All right. So that leaves us three to two in favor of Jeff. I think Jeff carries, carries the position. And so I think it would be worth us making a motion so to fill the position of Board Secretary with the elected member Jeff Parker. Having received a majority of votes from the board. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jenny. Very good. All in favor? Very good. Unanimously carried. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much. And I know that was an awkward and stupid process, but, you know, I think we've all gotten used to awkward and stupid. All right. So, all right. That takes us to our final, final item. So I'm, I'm going to, I have a motion here. I don't, I don't think that this is going to be terribly controversial. I hope it's not. So looking for a motion that the Eastern Board of Education, this is going to be a long one, so bear with me. The Eastern Board of Education established the following. A joint Eastern Reading and Region Nine Board of Education Personnel Search Committee of the whole, consisting of the membership of the Eastern Reading and Region Nine Boards of Education for the purpose of identifying a Director of Finance and Operations. The Personnel Search Committee shall be chaired by the Chairperson of the Board of Education, then acting as Chairperson of the Joint Boards. And two, a Personnel Search Steering Committee to consist of two members of each of the Eastern Reading and Region Nine Boards of Education with equal representation from the towns of Reading and Easton. The Chairpersons of the Eastern Reading and Region Nine Boards of Education shall be members of the Steering Committee ex officio. This Steering Committee shall be considered a subcommittee of the Personnel Search Committee and be empowered to collaborate with the Superintendent to design and implement a process for reviewing resumes and interviewing and screening candidates. The Steering Committees shall be co-chaired by one member from the board, from the town of Reading and one from the town of Easton to be selected by the committee and shall provide regular updates to the Personnel Search Committee. The Joint Personnel Search Committee and Personnel Search Steering Committee shall be automatically disbanded upon the execution of a contract between the three boards and the Director of Finance and Operations.
John wouldn't mind sending me that motion, would you?
Not at all. No problem. You, you didn't get all that? I mean, secretaries have to be really fast.
That was.
Now, I, I will, I will email all three motions that we used tonight.
Okay.
Yep. So do I, so this is the same motion that Reading made as well as Region Nine to form their, their committees. So do I hear that?
I'll move so we can discuss. Yep.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, discussion.
Sure. So the, so the chairman of the sort of the tribe board is Chris right now, right?
Yeah, that's right.
You're going to have a, you're going to have co-chairs?
For the Steering Committee. Coach, so, so two chairs for the Steering Committee, one chair of the overall Personnel Search Committee. So that, the, the overall Personnel Search Committee is the committee of 21.
Is, yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
And, and John, I, I assume that, that that'll be voted on starting in, in about 15 minutes?
Well, I think we'll vote, we'll vote now. And then the reason we wanted to meet today was so that we could jump into a non-meeting, which is any, any meeting of the Personnel Search Committee or the Steering Committee is a non-meeting because it's specifically related to hiring of senior personnel. Okay.
And when do we select participants, so to speak, for the, for the steering?
So our bylaws do not require that that be done in a public session, but I'm absolutely fine to do it now. I prefer to do it now if we can. So I would be looking for two interested parties from, from our board to participate in that Steering Committee.
Okay.
I know we have Jeff, Jenny and Devin on the Superintendent Steering Committee. That's a sort of larger steering committee than we, we usually do, but, you know, I think everyone's good with, you know, sort of the, the gravity of that. So any, anybody want to raise their hand?
Yeah, I feel left out of the.
Very good. Okay.
Can Jen be a part of this yet? Or can we wait and to make?
I could hold a spot. I could, I could hold a spot. We could say Randy and an, and an open spot. If, if Jen was interested in participating in that, it's certainly a, a good experience to, to be a part of.
Jen, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it seems like a good fit, given your experience.
Jen is muted.
I couldn't get off mute. Yes, I'm, I'm happy to participate, you know, if I, I know I can't vote yet, but, you know, if you want to save a spot for me and put me in, that would be fine.
Jeff, are you comfortable with that?
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's a gentle, talk about getting your feet wet. You'll probably.
I mean, you learn a lot about everything as you, you go through these personnel.
Well, I mean, it's a time commitment, but it would be a really good way to dive in and meet folks on the other boards, too.
Right. Right. Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. Okay. Very good. Then we'll, then for Easton's part of the Steering Committee, we'll have Randy and Jen. Perfect. Very good. All right. So do I hear, do, do any additional conversation about the, the motion?
One question, John. Will we have members of the community that will also be a part of the overall committee?
So I think the, we'll talk about the interview and screening of candidates and that process as a part of, a part of the larger Personnel Search Committee. So all 21 will be sort of talking about that. And I think it's, we, we just got to, it's a conversation with Riedel, I think, to, to say, you know, what's, you know, what should the process be? And I think we're also talking about the, you know, superintendent and, you know, interims and like, you know, all those things. So I think we'll, we'll have lots of opportunities to dive in on those questions.
I've, I've been approached by several members of the community who have expressed an interest and wanted to be a part of either, of either of the searches. So I just wanted, wanted to know where we were, where we stood on that.
Right. Yeah, I think I, I can't speak for, for the committee until we sort of get together and have that discussion. Okay. All right. Any additional conversation on that? Okay. We'll call.
Just so I know who to expect, so I don't miss anything, so I know I don't have an email yet. Who should I expect to hear from about a next meeting?
Yeah, you'll, you'll hear from me and I'll pass along to, you know, sort of as we build, you know, sort of get the co-chairs and sort of all that. So, you know, people will be, sort of be put in charge of, of these committees. Probably actually Chris Parkin is the overall, because he's currently the, the Chair of the, the Tribe Boards when we meet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right.
I see, just a quick observation, totally unrelated, but a hand raised in the list of participants. You are planning on having public comment?
Yes, we have public comment after this. That's why I want to vote on this. We have time for public comment. Yep. Thanks, Jane. Okay. Good. Any, any other discussion? All right. We'll call the question. Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Jenny.
Yes.
Thank you, Devin.
Yeah.
I vote yes. The motion carries five to zero. Very good. All right. That takes us to our next item, which is public comment. If you are interested in making public comment, please use the participant window to raise your hand. I see RJ Belido. You should be able to, and Agnes. You should be able to unmute now, RJ.
Hi. It's actually Maureen. We, we've done this before. Just, just a, a brief comment. I know that I've been told by Devin that it was posted on Facebook pages that the meeting had changed. Just, you know, a visual experience, when I looked at the ER nine website, and it's probably a little bit of my dyslexic brain, I thought tonight was a special, a special education meeting, which would be very important, but I had seen that the regularly scheduled meeting for tomorrow night had been canceled. And that had also been posted on Facebook that tomorrow night's meeting was canceled. So I think that would explain why you do not have like a very large group of parents here. I think we have many people that are very committed to making sure that parents have a voice in the selection of the next, the next superintendent. I think we're very concerned about who that's going to be and who's going to hopefully lead a successful and excelling educational experience for our children and leaving all the rhetoric and everything else out of it. So I think it was just asked, I, sorry, I had the dogs going nuts in the background. I, I want to say, I think it was Jeff. Is there a plan from our Board of Ed to have any kind of parental representation from, from both sides in the selection committee, even if we don't have a voice, but we're present? I think that would be greatly appreciated.
And Maureen, could you say your street name of your street?
Maureen Hanley Andrews Road.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, and Agnes?
Hi, Agnes Bevan, nine three nine Black Rock Turnpike. This is a comment for the, about the new Director of Digital Learning. I hope that with a Director of Digital Learning that ER nine schools will continue to provide support and accommodations for students. The response to the, uh, to the pandemic showed that schools are capable of providing remote instruction and assistance. And that could be really useful for students with mental health issues. As someone who struggles with anxiety and PTSD, these types of accommodations are incredibly useful and help all students to be successful. So I hope ER nine schools will continue to provide students with the support they need to be, uh, successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. Um, and I'm sorry, uh, Agnes, if you could, uh, your street?
Nine three nine Black Rock Turnpike.
Thank you. All right, uh, and before we go on, just so, so folks know, we do have another meeting and we, we can continue here. But we do have another meeting that, that we're trying to get to, uh, that's a Personnel Search Committee meeting to, to have our sort of initial conversations and try to answer some of these questions that have come up tonight. So if, if people can please keep comments, um, brief, it would be much appreciated. All right, uh, Dana Benson?
Yeah, Dana Benson, thirty-four Pond Road, Eastern, three four Pond Road, Eastern. I just wanted to echo Maureen's, uh, comment. Many members of the public would like to have some sort of a voice, or even if it's an ear, uh, in this process. I know a, a large committee is gonna be unwieldy, both for superintendent and all that, but the public, uh, really, people I'm talking to, we very much like to have some sort of a participation in, uh, the next choices for personnel. And the fact that we have so many vacancies across the system is really a unique opportunity to perhaps, uh, change direction or stabilize, uh, our course. The last thing is, um, I wondered if, I know the, I believe that, that the opening has been listed on a website. And this would be a rhetorical question, whether it's appropriate for members of the public to share that opening, that link, with qualified candidates that they may be aware of. If that's the appropriate way to try to assist the process, because we have only three months, you know, before we're open for business again. And we know that some of us have, uh, played a part in voicing complaints. And some of us would like to be a positive constructive, uh, process of helping instead of just hindering or, uh, tearing down. So I don't know. I know that we're not so goes back and forth with questions on this. Perhaps I'll, I'll quote, send that as an email question to the board to see if it's appropriate for members of the public to share the opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Crescent Drive. Um, I did, I will make it short. I sent an email out to the Chairs of the Board of Ed. You probably haven't had a chance to read it yet for, um, Eastern Reading. So I talked about a lot of different things, but one of the things in light of what's happened over the past year is that personally, as an educator, I think that after all that's happened, we really need to work on changing the face of Eastern public schools. So, um, I would really like to see with openings to hire qualified people of color in our schools, just a bit more, um, not just one person, because, um, I feel that Dr. Harrison personally was really singled out. So, um, you know, we could, you could have admins, teachers, class aides, and possibly a part-time counselor who would be available for students who may, you know, have specifically cultural issues. I, hold on, sorry, but, you know, not just obviously people of color to hire people of color for, uh, for, you know, public appearance, but actually very highly qualified people with proven track record. So, um, I just think that this is really the best way to go about diversifying things. I mean, we can change the curriculum, we can implement policies. I would also suggest that, I don't know if the schools have a diversity curriculum committee, which is a very neutral kind of way to discuss and introduce diversity into the schools along with the DEI task force, because I think that, you know, a DEI task force sounds very political to a lot of people and they really don't understand that language. So, um, you know, there's so many, so many things that could be done. So I hope you read my, uh, you know, I've worked for 30 years in diversity education, created committees at different colleges. Um, I've done a lot of this kind of work. So I really hope that you read my email for some suggestions and, um, you know, I mean, changing the face of things, I think is not that hard money-wise. Yes, maybe. It will take a while. It can't happen overnight. But I think I would hope that the Board of Ed does look towards doing that, even if it starts with classroom aides and a part-time counselor.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. Debbie?
Thanks. I, I'm Debbie Greenbrier. I live at eight Hay Street. I thought, uh, this is my first Board of Ed meeting and public comment. So I thought it was the three-minute rule from the town, town meetings that I've been to. So I'll try to get through it quickly. Um, I just first wanted to thank the Board of Ed for all you're doing. Thank you for keeping our schools safe and for making sure every student is welcomed and included. My three children, including one with special needs, went through the Eastern ER nine system and are now in their twenties. But I am still dedicated to making sure our students, all students, get the education they need and deserve to be future leaders and decision makers. And for the record, I'd like to thank Dr. Harrison for his brief but impactful service as our superintendent. He has been a model to our students for being brave, authentic, and willing to roll up his sleeves to do this hard and messy work. Thank you for your inspiration and your snow day video. And I look forward to hearing about your future contributions. I'd also like to thank the members of the Board of Ed who are working hard to keep diversity and inclusion education in our schools. There are statements on the record from Barlow grads who felt unprepared when they left our borders. Without a chance to experience different cultures and different points of view in our diverse world, our children will be cheated. And that means encouraging the higher and retention of educator and educators of color and the teaching of honest history. Randy Weingarten, who is President of the American Federation of Teachers, one of the nation's largest teachers' unions, stated, "Teaching the truth is not radical or wrong. Distorting history and threatening educators for teaching the truth is what is truly radical and wrong." So shame on those in Eastern who want to prevent our students from learning what they need to be leaders. Shame on those who splutter and lie about critical race theory, which is not even taught in our schools. And shame on those who want to indoctrinate our children with a whitewashed version of history. For only with honest history and diversity and inclusion as a way of life, will our children be able to think for themselves. They must learn that truth matters most, even if it is uncomfortable, that learning about differences is what will make them respected citizens of the world. Thank you again, Board of Ed. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the innovations happening in schools, the goals of the new Director of Digital Learning, and fall opening plans. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Carolyn Appenheim Hunting Ridge, um, Road. And, um, I wanted to thank the board, um, the staff, the administrators for getting through a really difficult, difficult year in more ways than one. It was very, very hard on all of my children, one in particular, but all of my children to get through the year. Um, and I know that it was no easy task for anyone. I wanted to, you know, point out to many who, that have pushed an agenda that critical race theory has been, been taught in our schools, that that's not the case. Had multiple discussions with teachers and with my students and with, you know, friends of, of kids that, um, it was, it was, it was this screened, screen, a smokescreen of sorts to, to get people to, to, um, fight, I feel like in town. So I, I appreciate what we all did to try to make it inclusive without being, uh, divisive within the Board of Ed. I hope, I look forward to, uh, the Board of Ed as, you know, elected leaders in the community, the education community, and helping us find new leadership, administrative leadership, and hope that, um, that we start as an entire community, and I'm gonna include myself in this, because I like to chat, that we start to let our elected officials and our administrators do their jobs. Um, I think that has been really lacking. Um, I think it was, it's been made impossible for some to do their jobs um, in the past year, um, by this, you know, hours of public comment, which made two, one to two hour meetings into six hour meetings. I can't imagine what you all do. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Carolyn. Facilitators? You can state your name and, uh, street?
My name is Pat Lanane. I apologize for facilitators. I can't change it. I live at one oh one Burr Street in Eastern. I want to just say ditto to Deb and to Caroline. Thank you so much for saying exactly what I was gonna say, because I absolutely agree with you. I want to thank everybody. Wish Dr. Harrison the absolute best. Congratulations to Jennifer. And I would also like to state that when we're doing this, I used to head up talent management for a bigger corporate corporation. Whenever you're doing a talent search, you want to keep it blind. You don't want to know whether it's male or female, you want to know gender, you don't want to know color of skin, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's really important that that is what we're doing. And I hope we are. I'm sure that we are. But just want to make that statement, uh, before we go tonight. Thank you so much, everybody, for everything that you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, uh, Maureen, uh, actually, I'm sorry, uh, Maureen, before we go to you, uh, we have somebody who hasn't made comment yet. So Jessica?
Yes, hi, Jessica Di Pietro, Jesse Lee Drive. I definitely agree with what was just stated about keeping, um, a blind side to race, gender in our search, because I feel strongly that the most qualified candidate should be the one that's brought forward, no matter their race, their gender, whatever. And I don't have a child in the school system yet, but I will be shortly. And I just think that as much as we talk about wha- whatever side of this you're on, all this starts at home. So what we really need to focus on as a community, and I know this doesn't necessarily go to the Board of Ed, is teaching our children from home what is important and all these racial issues that are being brought up. So, and that's what needs to be carried forth into the schools. So I think all of us need to look at what, not only what's being taught in the schools, but also where it starts from. Like, you've got your kids at home. We need to teach them the right things at home and support them and let them feel free and open to talk at home. So that I think is a point that needs to be made, that all of us need to start listening to our children. And if the children think it's a concern, then yes, we need to address it in the school system, because they need to be safe at school as well. And that's all, really.
Thank you, Jessica. Robin?
Hi, good evening. I'm gonna back this up a little bit, back to Dr. Harrison's statement earlier. As far as, you know, looking at the reopening plans for next year, and I, I understand people are disappointed to hear the guidance coming out of the CDC about masking in schools. But just prior to this meeting, I just got off another Zoom meeting, Robin, I think, four more hours, where did I say that? With regard to what we can be looking forward to in the coming weeks. And for our youngest learners, there's no vaccination coming prior to likely December, January is what I'm hearing now. I think uptake of the vaccine in the middle and high school, I'm not sure what the numbers are, but I would imagine the middle school is at best, maybe forty percent. So I think it would be premature to unmask our kids with a new variant that will be predominant in the coming weeks. It's disappointing. I want my kids to have as normal a life as everybody else. I think kids have been amazingly adaptable to wearing masks, and I often find them quickly putting it up when I take it down to examine them, like they're almost uncomfortable to take it off. I'm not saying that's what I want our kids to feel like, but I don't think it's as disruptive as we thought it was going to be. So, you know, we did a great, we did as good a job as any this year, and I look forward to next year being a safe one and a full one for our kids. But I do think some of these mitigating practices are gonna have to stay. Um, and best of luck to Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, uh, Maureen, and then Dana, and then I think we're gonna wrap up. Is that working? There we go.
Maureen first, you said.
Um, I would like to address just some of the comments that were made in regards to that there's some kind of smokescreen and that CRT is not in our schools. I am a mother of an HKMS student. And she is in sixth grade. And she has come home with some stories that have been quite disturbing to me from her social studies class. I had been reticent to share those. I did share them with certain members of the Board of Education, because I would certainly hope that they would be addressed. So for all the participants on the call, especially the parents that are on the call that make the statements that there is no CRT in our schools, I think you might want to question what's being taught in our sixth grade social studies class, where a pyramid of oppression was presented to the students. And the ensuing conversation was comparing the LGBTQ plus community to what happened to Nazi Jews. My daughter, who's very young and very innocent, came home to talk to me about this in-class assignment that something just didn't sit right with her, which might have been because of her grandfather served in World War Two and was part of freeing the Nazi Jews, which is a common story that she heard very often while she was growing up. History. She learned history. That's all I want all of our children to learn is history. Not something that's biased, not something that's put through some certain lens, just history. And just to put a postscript on my comment, is that particular teacher signed the NEA pledge of over a thousand educators.
I have to, Maureen, I, I, no, I'm sorry, Maureen. So it, it is a part of our bylaws that we not, um, get into anything attacking any employee of the district, um, on these public comments. It's a, it's a core part of our bylaws and clearly stated, it's not permitted in public comment to do that. The appropriate path is to first take up any issues with the teacher, then with the school administration, then with central office. So I'm, I'm sorry, I Dana?
Okay, I'll be very brief. Thank you for giving me a second, uh, second opportunity to speak. I just want to address this idea, um, that, um, but through our public comments, uh, that somehow we're impeding, uh, you from doing your job. I, I have a different view, and of course, that's the whole point, is everyone has different views of things. That's why we have a democracy, um, and different points of view are expressed. But I see, uh, the public comment is a very important part of your job. You're elected to represent the entire community of, what, thirty-five hundred families in Eastern, a seventeen million dollar school budget. It's a huge, uh, number. And, um, the public is given a couple of minutes to comment before and after your meetings. And yes, that may extend these meetings longer, but to the extent that I've been able to, uh, get people to express themselves in, in group letters to you, uh, you know, sometimes forty, twenty, thirty, whatever they are, people, uh, I'm saving you time. So I think that, that there's, that's the way I would look at it. We're, we're, we're helping you understand what some different people in the community see and how they perceive issues. Thank you for your service, and we'll let you get to the next meeting.
Thank you, Dana. Mimi? And then we'll go to board member comment.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, John. Um, Mimi Jacob, forty-one Morningside, uh, first time, long time. I've been attending the Board of Ed meetings for a long time in person at Keller and fortunately on Zoom. And it's nice to see participation that kicked in, uh, through the pandemic. People who weren't ever able to make it to the meetings. It's, you know, we see a lot of joining, whether they're, you know, here or there. So I first want to say the way you all work together on the board is So I first want to say the way you all work together on the board is awesome. You come from different perspectives, different backgrounds, and no matter what Board of Ed meeting we're at, you all represent yourself super well, you, you respect each other, and you have nothing but the kids to focus on. And I appreciate that. I've got two kids in the school system. Um, I'm sorry for all the distraction and the noise that's taking you away from the, the important matters of focusing on the education of the kids, and the education has to do with both reading, writing, arithmetic, and things around it, making sure they're safe in their environment, which is important to me. I have two kids, one kid I need to make sure is super protected in the environment, so I appreciate that. Dr. Harrison, you were appreciated by the Jacobs Shaborni family of forty-one Morningside. So I hope as you go on, you know that, you know, there was a lot of people in this town that, you know, respected the work you did and were looking forward to, uh, having you kind of lead us. I apologize for how this ended up. Um, my kid, I'm looking forward to September. I'm looking forward to hearing the opening plans. I know there's a lot on your plate. Uh, my kids didn't miss a beat with the mask issues. They were just excited to be in school, high school and middle school. Keep the kids in school. So no matter what we do, if it has to be masked, I, you know, I'd love them to have them not masked, but if it has to be masked, get them in school. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all the work and time you give up for your, from your families to do this. So thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, quickly. Thank you.
Yes, very quickly, um, someone just referred to Nazi Jews. And I think you meant Jews who were victims of the Nazis. I just wanted to make that clear. If that's what your daughter was talking about, I hope you corrected her, because there were no Nazi Jews. That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Uh, look for board member comment.
John, very briefly, um, Dr. Joseph Ararty is the consultant to the boards. And if you need to get in touch with them, want to get in touch with them, want to communicate your interest, anything to do with the searches that are going on, email us at the board and we'll make the connection to Dr. Joseph Ararty. He will solicit input from all the townsfolk in various, um, I guess, online, you know, calls or Zoom calls or whatever, to get your feedback, as he has on previous searches.
Yeah, th- thank you, Randy. I think that's a, a point really well made. Um, he has done focus groups and, and sometimes had sort of lackluster attendance at, at really important hires recently, where only a couple of people are showing up. So, uh, you know, if you really want to have your voice heard, showing up on those focus groups where you're going to get the opportunity to really express, um, what's important to you, that's, um, there's definitely opportunities there. Um, any additional board member comment? Yes, Jenny.
I do.
Please.
Sure. Two quick things. One is because there definitely seems to be a lot of interest in participation in these, uh, searches for new personnel. I think it's important for the public to understand, um, that we are often, uh, given educate, you know, educated by our consultants about the issues of confidentiality, um, with the candidates who do apply for these positions. So I think it's probably unlikely that the public would be participating in the, the interview process. But as John and Randy just spoke, um, about, you know, you can certainly send us information. We can forward that on to Dr. Ararty. Or, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to make sure that the public is notified about any opportunities to provide feedback. So you have our word, we will try to do that as best we can over the next, uh, month or two during the summer, um, so that we can, you know, hear from folks about things that are really important to them. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was about the nature of public comment, since that was mentioned. And, and that's that, be careful about how I say this. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth. And I think one of the things that drags us into hours on end until two o'clock in the morning is that one person responds to somebody else's comment, they want to clarify. And it really is supposed to be a time of expressing, you know, anything that's relevant to any, any of our board work specifically. But it isn't a time to respond to each other. If, does that make any sense? And that what I'm, what I, what I see and have heard over these months, that was not a specific comment on anyone in particular. I've just seen it happen so many times over the last few months, is that there's clearly a need and a want out there in the community for discussion, for forums. So, uh, you know, I don't know how we sort of employ, implore our leaders to think about ways that we can find safe, productive spaces for the community to engage in those discussions, because the need and the want is there so that it doesn't spill over into Board of Ed meetings as much as it has. Um, and sort of derail, you know, the, the good intentions of, of the folks who are here trying to do what we need to do. Um, so that's all I wanted to say, you know? So I think as board members and community members, we need to keep moving forward and trying to look for other ways that people can come together and talk about these things, so that it doesn't become a back and forth during, um, public comment. And then lastly, we need to get back together. So John, I am asking you as our board chair and my fellow board members to please do whatever is necessary for upcoming meetings to get us back in person, because I do think that the distance in the space between us has not helped over these last months through all of these times. I think it has perpetuated a lot of, um, tension and division, and that we would be much better off if we could just sit in the same room and share the good energy that we have when we work together. So that's my final request. Thank you.
Agreed, Jenny. And, you know, I think generally we don't have, uh, you know, like, we won't have an August regular board meeting. And like, that's been a, a fairly regular thing. I, I think we're definitely going to want to get together in August. And, and I think for that to be in person, um, wholeheartedly agree with that. So, um, any additional, uh, board member comment? Uh, yes, Devin.
I just wanted to, I think, John, you said this earlier when someone was speaking, just reiterate. Um, because I know this, this was confusing to me when I first got on the board, but before I was on the board, even as a parent. If you have, um, there's, there's been a lot of chatter about critical race theory. And I, you know, I don't think any of the board members, I know I haven't seen any evidence of that in our schools. Um, all of the curriculum work that has moved forward has been focused on math. And I think Dr. Pearson, you called it a great job of explaining that this evening. And I know I'm really excited about the new K five and vision math and the amazing work for K, for six, eight. But if, if you have concerns about something that's happening in the classroom, um, you, your, your child comes home. I know my kids come home sometimes and they, they're like, I did this today. And I'm like, what did you do? And I just ask, I ask the teacher and the teacher gives me some better understanding, because sometimes my kids misunderstand or I misunderstand my kids. And then, you know, if, if you're, if you're not getting the answers, then you take it to the principal. And then, you know, you can go into the central office. I think we want open communication, absolutely, but we also want to make sure that we're not accidentally, you know, inflaming something or calling out a person publicly in a way that, that hurts their career. And I think that everybody here can agree, including, um, you know, our members of the public who are very passionate about, um, the, the education that our kids are receiving as well. So just kind of a reminder of the process, because I know, um, there's just been some confusion about that. And I don't want anybody to think that their, their voice isn't important and what they have to say isn't really important.
Thank you, Devin. Good. Uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
I am.
Very good. All in favor? I think we are unanimous. We are adjourned at seven twenty-two. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.